All right, so I have 7:03. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, we have no amendments to the agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second Matt.
Go ahead and vote by roll call.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seha?
You're muted Angie.
Oh, she has no sound. She's gonna leave and come back in.
All right, uh, we can, we can keep going and just do a six person vote on this one.
Okay, Counselor Eccleston?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Sunny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
All right, so now we have our time for public comment. So if there's anybody in attendees that would like to make public comment, just go ahead and press a little button to raise your hand. We'll go ahead and pull you over into the room. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we will go ahead and move on. Consent agenda. Everybody get a chance to read through the minutes. Any questions, comments, concerns? We get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
All right, vote by roll call.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Is Angie connected yet?
She is not back yet. Or, looks like she is, yeah.
Go ahead and just go through the roll and come back to Angie.
Okay, Counselor Seha?
No, you're gonna skip Angie and come back.
Okay, Counselor Eccleston?
Yes, aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Sunny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Angie, do you have sound yet?
Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, so go ahead and call Angie's vote.
Counselor Seha?
I have to abstain. I don't know what you, I just, I couldn't hear anything.
Consent agenda, Angie.
Oh consent, okay. I, yeah, aye.
Okay.
And did we get, uh, Nico?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, no public hearing, no old business. So new business, we have resolution number 0721, resolution authorizing and supporting the city of Almsville application, excuse me, for a transportation and growth management planning grant. It's all you Ron.
Yeah, and if council recalls during some of our earlier strategic planning sessions, we had talked about setting up conversations with, um, DLCD, the Department of Land and Conservation District, which helps regulate for the state zoning and uses and all those good things. And we had talked to them about the ID zone and how we could maybe change some of the allowable uses to be more conducive to what council's vision in that area would be, and also to help make development more feasible in that area. One of the things that they, they gave us some great feedback, um, and, and you know, we did have, they were somewhat supportive if we went through a process and was able to submit an application that had some sound-supported, analysis behind it. And so one of the steps to do that would be to, uh, that we found is that we could apply for what's called a land use and transportation planning grant. And this is through ODOT, uh, and it would work specifically on land use related to the ID zone, but then also updating our transportation plan, which is needed as well. And then how can we do things like, how can we increase, uh, the interchange management trip limitations that ODOT has placed on that? That's one of those barriers. And how you do that really is through some of this land use work. As an example, if we were to factor in things like trails, uh, walking paths and, um, bus stops or transit center in the ID zone, that dramatically increases the amount of trips that you're allowed because you get a credit for that. So it's looking at that, it's gonna look at the Delmar East, the Delmar West intersection, and does that help us realize an increased number of trips out there and then be able to provide all of that information to DLCD and then to ODOT, for that development application or development applications when they come in. So this is the first step, um, you know, we don't always get these, this is our, you know, this is our, our shot to try to get some information to, to make some changes out there and, uh, we need a resolution to submit with the application.
Well, does anybody have any extra questions or did Ron hit everything for you? If so, can I get a motion?
I moved to approve a resolution, authorizing and supporting the city of Almsville's application for a transportation and growth management planning grant as presented.
Second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seha?
Aye.
Counselor Eccleston?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Sunny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Cool, moving on, uh, our directional sign project. So for anybody who's been tracking some of the, the, the goings on in the community, this has been a, a hot topic as of late, something that Ron and I have chatted about a few times. So go ahead and give your, your report on this one, Ron.
Well, actually, if council remembers, we ran out of time during our strategic planning session and then didn't get another one scheduled. There were kind of the, the, the less important items, but we still wanted to get to them. And this was one of those items, uh, when we were doing that back in February and March. And, and there's actually signage throughout the community for other purposes and the, the, I'll bring some of those back, uh, forward to you as well in, in another presentation, but, um, I had a conversation with a local business owner who was interested in getting some signage that directed people down to the downtown business corridor. We had this project in the wings that didn't come before council, and so my response was, well, we don't allow it now, but we do have a project. I just can't provide you a guarantee, uh, as to when it would come forward or, or, um, or if council would approve it, because I can't speak for them in advance. But I went ahead and I put this together as an item. I looked through the city budget. There is money in the, uh, streets budget, which would fund a project like this. And so, um, so it was timely, uh, with those concerns that were raised and, um, and honestly, it's, it's a pretty easy project for us to execute. I don't know if there's anything else to say. Um, I did direct the, the, the businesses owners to ODOT off of Highway 22. They do have a highway signage, uh, program, but that's completely separate and, and really is not under the jurisdiction of the city or input from the city whatsoever. I think there's a fee that they pay, um, and that's their program. But where these signs would go is once the, the traffic got off the freeway, um, you know, somewhere in that vicinity of the exit ramp, there would be, we'd try to place one of these signs. Um, and then we've got two or three locations picked throughout the city. One, if council did approve this, we'll still have to go through the process ourselves of permitting it through Marion County. Some of it would be in Marion County right away. And, um, and then ordering the signs and getting those installed. I put a $12,000 budget. That's high, but, um, honestly, it depends on the design that we go with. If we go with kind of that arch design, um, that's outsourced and, um, probably takes a little longer and it, and it costs about a thousand dollars more just to do that bend. And so we did an alternative design, um, which is the second page, which is a thousand dollars less and probably what we would choose to go with. Um, and then if you see the city's new logo, um, there, there would be some places throughout the city that would just have the logo, um, and maybe one directional sign on a single pole. And that would be, um, maybe Wildwood Park as an example downtown. We wouldn't have a need for more than one directional sign. So we wouldn't put up the big two post one. It would just be a, a single post sign. If council has any questions, I'm happy to answer. Um, again, we do have the budget and it's within our current codes, uh, if the city leads this project.
So, and, and Ron and I, again, have, have talked about this a couple of times. Um, the one thing I would ask, especially after having, um, toured the high school in regards to the bond and everything, let's reach out. Cause there, there may be some things that they can help out with as a project as far as like making the signs and everything that, I mean, they've got a CNC machine, they've got all, like all the tools that would be required for something like this. It might be worth looking at.
I, I, uh, mayor probably should have included that because I know that's important to you. I did reach out to the, uh, teacher that does the fabrication and currently their equipment only allows them to go up to a two inch tubing and the tubing that we have here is, is, uh, four inch tubing. And so they don't currently have the equipment to be able to do that. Um, but we did have a very good conversation. Um, and, um, he's definitely interested in working on a project for the city. They just don't necessarily have all the equipment. The other thing is, is that would, it would delay the project. And with the, the, the big concern from the, uh, local business owner was, you know, timeliness. We really want to try to get these in as soon as possible. So, those were the two issues that were raised with that, but I did, I did check and.
I, I understand that. I, I would say one is two inch tubing not sufficient for even like maybe the smaller sign that goes by Wildwood Park or, you know, something along those lines. And then two, I understand that the concern from the business owner was timeliness. At the same time, we don't operate on the business owner's schedule. Everybody knows this is government. Things do go slower. And as long as we have a timeline available, I don't think there is any issue with explaining to the business owner, like, listen, we're doing our part, but it does take a little bit longer by virtue of this being government. Um, maybe, maybe we look at it for the, the, the smaller sign that, that you were talking about, something along those lines. I just, you know how I am. I would like to keep the school involved and I like to see what we can do to cut our own cost as well. So if there is a possibility of involving them in some part of this, I, I would like to, if not, so be it.
Yeah. Oh, go, go ahead.
I've got some questions on the signs. So the one that, uh, that's open and has the points. How's the durability of these signs? So, I mean, we get lots of wind. Is there gonna be some movement on that and it's gonna crack and get brittle?
No.
Or even easy for somebody to, uh, want that sign and take it off of there?
I mean, if this thing is two, two feet in the ground with, with concrete on it, bro, that ain't going anywhere.
I'm just, I'm just asking what could be, what's gonna be going in there?
At, at that point, if someone tries to steal it, they've done enough work, let them have it.
I mean, any, any, any sign that you have in the city could be taken. I mean, they're all, uh, fastened with fasteners, but, um, we actually were looking at four inch tubing and it's gonna go three feet into the ground in concrete. So,
Yeah.
the sign is not going anywhere. Now, if somebody wanted to vandalize or take one of the individual directional panels out, um, you know, they might be able to do that, but you know, you order, you order another one, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, once they're in there maintained, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, three feet of ground, four inch tubing, that ain't.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about them taking the whole sign. I'm just talking about them taking the, the Almsville logo and doing something cute like that.
I don't think that cool yet.
Yeah, the, the signs themselves, uh, the, the posts are metal, uh, and they're pretty durable. The signs themselves are just aluminum. So, you know, I mean, if I was gonna take a sign, I'd probably go after something easy to get a hold of, you know, these are probably gonna be a little harder.
And I mean, we can electrify them just to see what's up.
Yeah.
Wrap a car battery to it, see what happens.
I'm not saying that the,
Well, the first person that would complain about it would go, what were you doing touching the sign?
I mean, if we offer some overtime for some of our reserve officers to sit out there with a, a paintball gun, I bet they take it. Right, does anybody else have any questions? Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion on this one, Ron?
Yes.
Okay, just make it straight. Oh yeah, okay, sorry. I'm, I don't have my usual two screens right now, so I'm having to jump back and forth.
I move that we approve the community directional sign project as written.
Do we have a second?
Decide on the color.
I'll second that.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seha?
Aye.
Counselor Eccleston?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Sunny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
So, uh, just as a point of clarification, uh, and it, it wasn't needed for the motion, it's just council's preference. Um, do you want me to go back to the school with the two pole design? Um, and see if that's something they're interested in, even if it takes longer? Is that, is that your preference?
My, my preference would be to involve the school if possible. If it is something that they absolutely cannot do, so be it. But as you said, you know, having a smaller sign somewhere, if that's something they can do, I would love to have them involved. And I would recommend, you know, we reach out to, uh, either Madeline or, uh, you know, the principal or whoever. And if there's some students involved, let's see if we can get them some community service hours, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, mayor. So just so you know, I knew you were gonna ask that and I did that, I did that two weeks ago when I was putting the agenda packet together. Madeline connected me with John, who's the shop teacher. We had a great conversation about the project. I'll, I'll, I'll double check for clarification that he doesn't have the equipment, even if we go with the other sign and see what their time is. And then if you're okay with me making the decision one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. You know, I just, I like to give them the option, you know?
All right, all right.
All right, so moving on, we have the memorandum of understanding with the Exchange Club for Volunteer Event Assistance. I believe this is for the Corn Fest, yes?
Well, it's really for anything that they volunteer with throughout the year. Uh, and, um, uh, we, 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 in past years, have done something informal with the old Corn Festival Board where they, they really did kind of man the Saturday market in past years. And then we just turned over the rent money or the, the market revenue money to them. Um, and so last year, uh, and, and I think part of the year before, we kind of took the market over ourselves just because of, you know, there was a transition on the board and, um, we hadn't fully integrated everybody into that process. And then we had COVID last year. And then, um, now that we're gonna try to expand the market and move it into a every Saturday, um, event, I thought this was a good way for us to go ahead and do a reset and actually have a formal agreement. It, it, it lowers the city's risk than the kind of the informal process that we use. So you're always better to have an agreement. But basically, in the agreement, um, all, all we did was memorialize that, um, they're gonna man the Saturday market shifts, uh, primarily. There might be a day where they're not available. We said, we can pick that up. Um, and that's kind of the way that it happened with the previous group. Um, and then they're gonna volunteer 200 service hours. Uh, anytime that we, uh, provide money to a group, we want to make sure that we're memorializing that there, there is a return on that investment because we don't want to just give away public funds. So, um, they're gonna volunteer 200 hours and basically they're gonna man that market. One of the things that they put in their goals, uh, was to try to form a local nonprofit organization. And we said in there that they will work towards that. They don't necessarily have to do that as part of the contract, but that's something that they want to do. And I know that the council really liked having, uh, the, uh, Exchange Salem Club be the, help be kind of the fiscal agent, uh, when we were doing like a community-wide fundraiser for the wildfires. Um, and so they're gonna work towards that and that's a desire of their group as well. So it supports them, it supports the city and it provides volunteers. They will work the Corn Festival. That's, that's part of their commitment to the community. They're a volunteer group, so that's really what they do.
And we're looking at, uh, what, Saturday, the, the fifth is gonna be the, the first Saturday market?
I think it's the 26th of June.
26th of June. I thought we were going earlier. I thought we were doing June, July, August, September. Are we?
It's, yeah, we always start the Saturday after, I think it's the, uh, last Saturday of June, but what we used to do is we do the last Saturday of June, then we do July, then we do August, then we do September.
Okay, so we're doing the 26th.
So we're, we're, we're starting at the same schedule. We're just doing every Saturday.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so this one specifically is one that I have to sign though, right?
Well, yes, and the reason why I said that, um, you needed to sign it, and there, there's no rush because they have to ratify it at their meeting too, as long as it's signed before July, is I am a member of the volunteer group Exchange.
Yeah, so you have to.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, I didn't think it was appropriate for me to sign the contract, so.
So, yeah, okay. Um, I, the only reason I bring that up is because I leave tomorrow, so I'm gonna have to do one whenever I get back. So we've got till July is what you're saying?
Yes, we're just getting authorization from the council tonight, then it'll go before them. And then, you know, they'll, they'll agree to it or not agree to it, and then you can sign it, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, so, does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody wanna yell at me for letting a F-bomb slip? Are we just gonna let that slide?
We're human, right?
There you go.
Happens.
We're three years into this and this is the first time I let one slip. I get a pass.
I'll, I'll beep it out.
So do we have a motion?
I moved authorize Mayor Clevenger to sign the MOU with the Exchange Club of Almsville as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote by roll call.
Counselor Casares?
Aye.
Counselor Seha?
Aye.
Counselor Eccleston?
Aye.
Counselor Lee?
Aye.
Counselor Sunny?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So if for some reason anything does pop up and for some weird reason they need this sign before I get back, Ron, just email it to me. I can sign it and get it back to you.
And, and Angie can sign in your place under our charter anytime you're not available. Yep.
Uh, so moving on, your report, Ron.
Uh, you know, I kind of wrote the report out. I think a lot of it is just updates to the council on a lot of our projects, but as you can tell, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on. We're extremely busy and productive. And, um, and we're kind of playing a race against the clock to get ready for summertime with a lot of these projects. So, um, so we're, uh, we're definitely busy and having conversations constantly with, uh, everybody involved to make sure the projects are moving accordingly. If you have any questions about anything in my report, I can answer them, but I don't really think, um, there's anything there that's, uh, of surprise.
Yeah, I mean, reading through it, it was all just updates on stuff that we've been tracking for a while now, you know, no, nothing too crazy. Um, if anybody has any specific questions, cool, but if not, we can, uh, move on.
And, uh, just to add to that, you have the police report in your packet. Again, it all is pretty, uh, standard stuff and public works report. Um, you know, they're, they're actually adding a little bit of updates, um, to that from a staffing standpoint. Uh, we did get our, our one public works position filled, um, where we actually accept, continue to accept resumes for the position that council will create, or, uh, may create as part of the budget proposal, uh, for July 1st. So otherwise everything's, everything's moving on.
Cool. Well, moving on then, we've got, uh, council reports. Anybody got anything?
We met, um, with the Mid Valley Transportation Commission and there's a whole bunch of work. They're gonna email us a list out of what it is, and I will forward that on, but there's gonna be lots of work happening around our three counties in Focam, Hill and Marion this coming summer. A lot of them are starting the first of June.
Excellent, we need it.
So I, I'm sure at least most of the council is aware. Um, so Ron and I were in on a meeting with, uh, Senator Merkley's office recently regarding infrastructure projects and a, a big chunk of that revolves around water. Senator Merkley has stated that kind of his, his big push over this next legislative session is really gonna specifically be water projects in rural communities. So that is something that is hopefully going to help benefit us. Uh, we kind of described the challenges that we have encountered. Um, and so I, I have faith that his offices is going to do what they can to help address this issue. Uh, on top of that, I testified in front of the legislature in regards to all the infrastructure funding that is coming in. Um, basically, the, the legislature gave everyone the opportunity to kind of plead their case. So, uh, I had the opportunity to do that. And again, just kind of explain that right now, we're, we're in a position that our options are very limited. We do have to find a way to fix our water and sewer lagoon system, moving to a mechanical system. And it's something that really is out of our, our cost range right now. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we are going to see at least an additional chunk of funds come in that are going to help alleviate the, the burden of that. But again, it's, it's government. You never know how things are gonna go. Uh, I also spoke with, uh, Representative Raquel Moregreen, uh, in regards to some of the money that she was allocated for projects, uh, and what she could potentially look at if you're in Almsville. And there's been some communication back and forth with, uh, Senator, uh, Deb Patterson's office. I did invite her to the Saturday market, uh, her, her predecessor, um, Denise Poles, you know, she had come out to a couple of them just to, you know, be a part of the community, answer questions, all that kind of stuff. So that, that same invite was extended to her. With that, you know, as we've done in the past, I've tried to set up times so that we have, at the very least, someone from the city staff and someone from the council available during the Saturday markets. I understand that now that we're doing it every Saturday, it may make it a bit more difficult. Um, so informally, I'll probably be kind of emailing around, maybe go through Ron, whatever else, to find what, what's a time that people are available? Is it the, the first Saturday, the second Saturday, maybe the second and the fourth or whatever, to have some of us available at the Saturday markets. As usual, just to answer questions, be there, be a part of the community and help people put faces to names. Um, finally, I leave tomorrow morning, uh, out to Niger. Um, thankfully, based on the timing, I actually get back, I believe it's the 24th, the morning of the 24th, which would be our next council meeting. So I should have no issues making the next council meeting. Um, however, would you have the budget meeting for, uh, tomorrow, maybe iffy. Next week I should be good, but yeah, it, it's Africa. You never know what hap, what's gonna happen. So I will be in contact to make sure that everybody's aware whether I will be able to be present or not.
And the mayor did attend our budget open house last week and we kind of went through the budget, looked at the long, um, the long-range forecast model and then dove down into some detailed questions here and there based on the interests of the participants. Uh, and so he's provided some input, but it's, um, it's a good budget. It's sustainable and it's all the marks, so.
Straightforward stuff. I mean, if I can't be at the meeting tomorrow and y'all get it. Straightforward stuff. I mean, if I can't be at the meeting tomorrow and y'all get it done in one meeting, I won't be upset about it.
That's our plan.
I have a question. Are we meeting on the 24th with it being a holiday? That's Memorial Day.
Oh, is it the 24th? I thought it was the 20.
It's the 31st.
The 31st.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, Memorial Day's the 31st.
Oh, yeah.
Because usually they say the Fourth Monday. That's why I was asking, so.
I mean, let's, let's double check that.
Um, the calendar's on my wall right here, and it says Memorial Day observed is the 31st.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
All right.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Lena.
All right, moving on, good of the order. Anybody have anything for the good of the order? If not, I believe that's all we got. I have 7:33. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Good deal.
Cool. Have a good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.